Good evening and welcome to the 7:30 meeting, regular meeting for Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Wilder, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's go ahead. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day in the city of Lynchburg. We thank you for the city council members, our staff members, all the city employees. We thank you for the work that we're doing for our community. Continue to give us guidance and direction as we make decisions that is best for our community. Give us the wisdom and the aptitude to do what's best for all of our citizens and so we can be stronger, we can be wiser, we can be a better community for all citizens. In your precious name we pray, amen.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, this evening, we have a recognition. We are joined from one of our members from the Mayor's Youth Council, Ms. Maya Lewis. And Mayor's Youth Council attendees or members attend a council meeting, or several if they choose, and we like for the community to know who they are. So Maya Andrea Lewis is a junior at Heritage High School. Maya is an honor roll student. She is currently enrolled and excelling in her Advance and AP classes and has a GPA of 4.1. She will be inducted into the National Honor Society in April of this year. She hopes to attend the University of Virginia and major in Biology or Psychology and then attend medical school. She plans to become a surgeon one day. Maya is very active in her school and community. She is a member of the Heritage Marching Band, Big Orange Marching Machine, where she plays the flute. I used to play the flute. I had to throw that in there. She is also in the Concert Band and a member of the New Heritage Singers. She was also a member of the 2018-19 Indoor Track Team. Maya participates in the Kuwamba African Dance Ensemble and is often a featured singer in community events as well as on her church choir. She has sung the Star Spangled Banner for the Virginia Commonwealth Games, Liberty University's basketball games, and for Horizon's Lynchburg Got Talent performance. She's also performed for council here in the council chamber. She was also asked to sing for the 2017 State of the City Address. Maya was selected to represent her school for the Hype Healthy Youth Through Prevention and Education Club. She is a very active member of the Court Street Baptist Church Youth Choir and Junior Ushers. In fact, she is the current president of the Junior Ushers. She loves the Lord and singing gospel and praise songs. She has volunteered at the Humane Society, Lynchburg Public Library, Camp Meadowlark, and various church activities. She is currently a member of the CAP College Admission Process Program with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. She is also a member of the 2019-2020 Lynx Intercultural Institute, as well as a member of the NAACP Youth Council. Finally, she is the current Ms. Virginia Elks. She has made various appearances at community events as the Ms. Virginia Elks. She was also given the opportunity to compete at the national level in August 2019 for the national title. She did not win, but will still keep the state title until May 2020. The biggest issue facing youth in our city is alcohol and drug abuse. There should be more programs to address this issue available at our high schools. There should be groups led by other teenagers and young adults to discuss this problem, educate about the various types of drugs that are in our community, and teach strategies on how to say no effectively when feeling pressured. There should be opportunities that teenagers can hear from others how using drugs has affected them. Maya joined the Mayor's Youth Council to continue to serve and give back to her community and develop her leadership skills. She may be quiet and reserved at times, but has a heart for helping others, using her voice to minister to others through song, and is ready to make a difference in the life of others. So tonight, we welcome Ms. Maya Lewis. You are busy and still have a 4.1 GPA. Thank you. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearings, Public Comment, and General Business. The first section is the Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. Number...
So moved.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion? So moved, and are you ready to vote? Thank you.
Second.
Yes, I heard Councilmember Perro second it. All right, thank you. And yes, unanimous vote, and the board is working right now. Thank you. Next is the Public Hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedures: Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Number five is a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution approving the submission of substantial amendments to the fiscal years 2019 and fiscal year 2020 Program Years 2018 and 2019 Annual Action Plans for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and Home Program to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and reallocate $95,000 from the fiscal year 2018 Home Program Project, James River Housing Development, and to the fiscal year 2018 Florida Terrace Apartment Home Project within the fiscal year 2019 CDBG and Home Program Annual Action Plan, and reallocate $70,000 from the fiscal year 2019 Home Program Project, James River Housing Development, and to the fiscal year 2019 Florida Terrace Rental Housing Project within the fiscal year 2020 CDBG and Home Program Annual Action Plan. Ms. Walker... Well, that was a lot right there. Will have a summary of the request for us. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, and members of council. As Mayor Tweedy has stated, tonight's city council is conducting a public hearing to amend the fiscal years 2018 and 2019 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Program Annual Action Plans in order to reallocate home funds from the Rush Homes James River Housing Development Project to the Florida Terrace Rental Housing Project. On July 10, 2018, and June 25, 2019, respectively, city council approved the projects and submission of the fiscal years 2019 and 2020 Annual Action Plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Tonight's public hearing is required in accordance with the City's Citizen Participation Plan for the Home Program and are considered substantial amendments to the Annual Action Plans due to the change of the location, as well as the cancellation of a project and the introduction of a new one. Rush Homes submitted a request to city staff to reallocate the program years 2018 and 2019 Home Program Funds for the Florida Terrace Rental Housing Project. Rush Homes' request and these amendments propose to reallocate home funds in the amount of $95,000 and $70,000, respectively, from the Rush Homes Rental Housing Development Project, James River Housing, to the Rush Homes Florida Terrace Rental Housing Project. The Florida Terrace Project will be located at 2117 Florida Avenue. The project will provide low-income housing for persons with and without disabilities and permanent supportive housing for people exiting homelessness who also have disabilities. Not only will the Florida Terrace Project provide affordable housing units, but will provide a higher match for the low-income housing tax credit application that Rush Homes plans to submit for this project. This project, as you all will recall, was supported by city council at its February 11 meeting through the approval of a conditional use permit. A public notice for this meeting was published in the news in advance and through social media. Prior to the meeting, city staff had not received any public comments regarding the substantial amendments to the fiscal year 2019 and 20... Excuse me, 2020 Annual Action Plans. Mr. Jeff Smith, Executive Director of Rush Homes, is here to speak regarding the request for the reallocation of the home funds.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Mayor Tweedy and members of council. My name is Jeff Smith, and I serve as Executive Director of Rush Homes. I want to thank you for this opportunity. At the very first, I wanted to say that in order not to bypass the Community Development Advisory Committee about this, Mike Gillette had spoken to, I believe, Councilman Nelson at one point, and I had emailed Councilman Wright about the same thing, as they were the council representatives on SEDAC at the time of the original request for funds. I want to speak to you a bit about the genesis of our request to reallocate the funds from the former James River Housing Project. We initiated the James River Housing Project in 2018. We had had a house donated to us by Wells Fargo that was on Holly Street, and we believed we could combine it with four other housing units in one form or another to create a larger enough project to acquire city home funds and get a match with state DHCD home funds as well. We believed we could do both. Don Fagan, the LRHA Executive Director at that time, was interested in partnering with Rush Homes regarding sites on Pulaski Street. Over the next year and a half, we went as far as making... as asking our architect to make some preliminary drawings for potential housing in there, looking at modular designs and so forth. Over the next months, we were completing... we began to complete an Old Forest Village... we were completing in 2018 Old Forest Village Project, which basically drew our attention away from the James River Housing Project until we could get that finished. And LRHA did not, at that time, move forward regarding title to the properties in question. It's a bit different, the process for the housing authority to acquire... they need to acquire title... not acquire title, but do title search to the property so that they can sign purchase contracts, whatever they need to do. It's a little bit different with us. We can do the purchase contracts first and then go about title search if we so need to do that. In 2019, we again asked for home funding regarding James River Housing for a couple reasons. We were the only Coto, I believe, that year requesting funds, and we knew we needed the additional money to do the project if it came about. And we also knew that LRHA was doing... pursuing title searches at that time. At the same time, we began to work with the housing authority towards larger projects. We began searches around the city for sites to do an additional project. I had talked to Ms. Fagan about that. She was on board with the idea of trying to develop a larger project, multi-family project. Because of the needs that are on our waiting list, we knew of the needs for housing in the community, for affordable housing, as we brought about, as we recognized from the housing study. So we started searching for other potential sites at the same time while the title... the title search was going on through the housing authority, we thought. Unfortunately, through the late summer, we did find a site and began to settle... we settled on a site, as you now know, for the Florida Terrace Project. And unfortunately, in the late summer of 2019, Ms. Fagan took a leave of absence. So at that point in time, we couldn't progress forward with anything in James River Housing, and we needed to move forward regarding Florida Terrace. If we were going to think about putting in a tax credit application for this year, preparation for tax credit applications usually take... and they can take nine months, they can take a year, six months was pushing at best. We needed to move forward. So I made an independent decision at that point. We needed to go forward here without having any knowledge of how the sites were going to happen, the Pulaski Street sites could happen at all. And the other thing that's important to know is, we're small enough that our capacity to do both at one time is a bit difficult for us. So we needed to make a choice, one way or the other. So when Ms. Fagan came back to LRHA, we both agreed that the appropriate thing to do was move forward with Florida Terrace as best we could. That's when we knew... that's when we requested and spoke with Ms. Walker about reallocating funds from James River Housing to Florida Terrace. This was in no way done to sidestep SEDAC. This was just a natural process that occurred where we had... we went from one project that we originally thought we could do, where we didn't have the sites available, or the sites weren't made available at that time. And we did have the potential to purchase... I signed a purchase contract in another site for a larger project, and we made a choice to go that way. So that's really the genesis of how this occurred. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have about the request.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. If we have any, we'll call you back up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, there's no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. I see Councilmember Perro and Councilmember Hegelsohn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Irwin, I don't know if this is required or not, but I would like to make a disclosure that I'm the chairman of the Lynchburg Regional... excuse me, Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority. I sit on that board with the mayor, Ms. Tweedy. We are not compensated in any way for our services on the board, but however, this is a joint partnership and an agreement with Rush Homes, so I think it's appropriate that it is disclosed... please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Irwin, but I think it's appropriate that we disclose our involvement, but there is not a statutory conflict of interest because there is no compensation involved whatsoever for this position. I also think it's really... the reason why city council members are placed on the housing authority board is to be advocates for the work that the housing authority is doing, and I think that's perfectly appropriate in this case. So, Mr. Irwin, did I cover that disclosure appropriately? And was it necessary, I guess?
It wasn't necessary, since you don't have a legal conflict under the Conflict of Interest Act, but there's nothing wrong with making the announcements so everybody will know. You know, the members of council do serve on the authority and in both roles.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Irwin. I guess it's better to err on the side of caution as opposed to what's happened in other localities. So, Madam Mayor, with that, I think this is a great project, as you know, and I move the resolution.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember Perro?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Wilder?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of questions. This looks a little odd to me, Ms. Walker. Last week, we changed the housing goals, right? So we... in the... and now it's stated in here that goal number one, the housing goals... the previous goal was increasing the number of owner-occupied units, and now I see why that goal was changed because it fits nicely in increasing the number of affordable rental units. Is that the goal that we just changed? I thought we changed that going forward, not...
Right, this does not apply to this project. Those goals are for 2024 that you approved last... on the previous council meeting.
That's what I thought, but that's... so I'm looking here at the page 28 on this document.
Right.
The Annual Action Plan 2018 says increase the number of... the goal is increase the number of affordable rental units.
Right, correct. That's what was in our previous action plan that we submitted for fiscal year 18 and 19, that were part of the 1520 goals.
So I thought that goal was not increasing the number of rental units, but increasing the number of...
Along with the homeownership was rental in those previous... with HUD, homeownership. Then they also added rental for us to tell them if there were rental projects, not necessarily that that was the specific goal that we were trying to achieve at that time. But I believe the goal does say rental. If I'm not mistaken, it says homeownership and rental.
This one, where I'm looking at on page 28, it says the goal name.
The goal description below that says develop affordable rental housing and first-time home buyers who are below 80% of the area median income opportunities to purchase affordable housing units also. So it included rental housing and homeownership.
So is that somewhere different than what this goal says that increased the number of... on page 28? Increase the number...
On page 28 with you, I think, aren't I? And then the goal description below that?
So number one, it says goal name. Increase the... and it's in yellow, so it's italic.
Okay.
I mean, it's highlighted.
Okay, then flip to page 29, please. It gives the goal description. Also, along with the goal name, below that, it says to develop affordable rental housing and assist with first-time home buyers.
Okay, so this isn't goal number one. So that's just the sort order? So that's not saying that goal number one?
Goal number one is increase number of owner-occupied units. And then if you go over on page 29, the goal name includes for the description to include rental and owner-occupied units, and then the description goes further with the rental housing and homeownership.
Okay, okay. It seemed odd that we just changed that, and it looked like it changed to fit for rentals. The other thing is, as Mr. Smith mentioned, is the normal protocols are when there's changes like this, back when I was on SEDAC, those items would go back to the Community Development Action Committee. Is there...
The Citizen Participation Plan was changed, I believe, in 2010. When I came back to work here at the city, we revised the Citizen Participation Plan, and any substantial amendments or changes throughout the year come straight to council without going to SEDAC.
Okay, so it wasn't required that it goes to SEDAC since then? Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is Public Comments, and during public comments, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Number six is hearing from a citizen, Mr. Gary Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff. Just wanted to say to Maya, there's another good school. Don't limit yourself. Down 81 on the other side of Roanoke, if you want to give that any consideration. My name is Gary Taylor. I'm a private citizen. So I'm not here as a concerned citizen as much as I worked last year with the Oasis Project in the city of Lynchburg and with Bridges to Progress. If I said that right. B-to-B, I'll probably say, referencing that. So I just want to come here to bring up some of the stuff to the entire council that we learned during that process and what a value B-to-B is to the city of Lynchburg, and that if it's allowed to continue and evolve, that it might be a blueprint for other communities. My main emphasis... some people in Lynchburg know me as Gary the Grocer. Anything in the last 50 and the next 20 years to do with the modern grocery store, I can tell you or have a discussion about. So that's my... how I got involved with Oasis. I'm a brick-and-mortar guy. So I've been in the grocery business all my life, and that's... I just had this calling. So I said, "Well, I read an article where the Oasis Project had a meeting with a group and a consultant from Washington, D.C.," which I thought was pretty odd because Washington, D.C. has nothing to do with Lynchburg, Virginia, "but they had offered their assistance as the Oasis Community Partners," I believe they're called. So these folks, they were going to help with the brick-and-mortar situation. The other part of the grocery business is there's no store from the north or the west that's ever survived in the south. So that pretty much eliminated them also. So as I became involved, I said, "Well, I need to go see what this thing is they're talking about downtown." So there was an article in the news in advance at the end of January or something. So I... I'm kind of semi-retired. I did consulting work for the grocery business. And I said, "Well, let me go downtown." So I go downtown, and I go in this place called The Grass Roots. Holy...
Your time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, The Grass Roots. And I'm like, "What the heck is this thing?" So then I figured out I need to talk to the mayor. So then I saw where she was speaking, so I went to talk to her, and she put me in charge with the Oasis Project folks. So, long story short, we went through the whole process and realized that that's not a viable option. But I further stayed with it, and now with Bridges to Progress, I think we've got a good opportunity to move forward. And there's a private group. I just want to... I want to get that in real quick. There's a private group...
Thank you, your time is up.
Yeah, a private group that is going to be doing the same thing similar to Bridges to Progress.
Okay.
If I could just say... can I just say they're having a...
No, I tell you what, your time is up, but if you could have the... give the manager information to our clerk, and she can distribute it to us.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor.
All right, next is General Business. This section includes general items of new business. Number seven is continuation of the discussion of the petition of F&amp;B Property Corporation to rezone approximately two and two-hundredth acres located at 5010 Boonsborough Road from R1 Low Density Residential District to B1C Limited Business District, conditional, to allow for the construction of a 4,500-square-foot bank building with associated parking. And Ms. Fresh Heisen will provide a summary of the request.
Madam Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you recall, I asked council if I could abstain for this vote because of a... the perception of a conflict, and I would appreciate if council would allow me to abstain from this specific vote as well.
Yes, council's fine with that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fresh Heisen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. As you stated, at the February 11 city council meeting, a public hearing was held for the Future Land Use Map Amendment and rezoning to allow the construction of a bank at 5010 Boonsborough Road. Council approved the Future Land Use Map Amendment from Low Density Residential to Neighborhood Commercial. The rezoning from R1 to B1C was tabled since the petitioner wished to add a proffer to the rezoning, and the reason for the item being tabled was to meet state code requirements and so that the proffer could be submitted in writing. The proffer that was added states that the area outside of the limits of disturbance, as shown on the concept plan, and including the 3.294-acre residue area, will remain in a forested condition henceforth. This was added in response to comments about protecting the adjoining residential properties. The other proffers remain intact as originally submitted.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hegelsohn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As this is what we asked for, I'll make a motion for approval.
Stand up.
All right, okay, thank you. No further discussion? No further discussion? All right, please cast your... hold on.
Before council votes... When last week, last meeting, when city council held a public hearing, this amended proffer hadn't been offered. Citizens didn't have an opportunity to look at it and comment, so I think it would be appropriate before council votes to allow anyone who wished to do so to speak on the amended proffer, not to reopen the public hearing, to speak to the project as general. In general, you've already heard that, but to give anyone who wishes to an opportunity to comment on this amended proffer because they didn't have that opportunity at the last meeting.
Thank you. And I do have that language here. Thank you, Mr. Irwin, so... for correcting us now. So as he said, tonight's council will hear comments from persons who wish to speak to the First National Bank's amended proffer clarifying that the 3.294-acre residue area that is not being rezoned will remain forested. Speakers should limit their comments to the amended proffer. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Since it's under general business, do we have to make a motion to reopen it? I mean, because it's under general business, not the public hearing.
You weren't required to re-advertize a public hearing because it wasn't a new proffer. It was just an amendment to clarify a proffer, but I do think would be appropriate, since citizens hadn't seen that proffer at the last meeting, to give them an opportunity to speak to it.
And it's only regarding, as you mentioned, number four?
Only mention the new language.
The new language. So is there anyone here who would like to speak to the new language for the proffer? All right, thank you. Considering there's no one here, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the proffer and accept the amendment. No further discussion? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes six with one abstention. Thank you. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution approving the use of $16,500 Capital Improvement Program Community Park Investment Fund. Program Community Park Investment Fund to match funding for a half-pipe feature at Rotary Centennial Riverfront Skate Park located at 11 Ninth Street, Lynchburg. The funds were appropriated in a previous fiscal year, and Ms. Jenny Jones will give a presentation for that.
Thank you. Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, and members of council, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting city council's approval for $16,500 in Community Park Investment Funds that's located in the Capital Improvement Program for a half-pipe skating feature to be added to Rotary Centennial Riverfront Skate Park. Our department's intent is to replace a popular skate feature, which was self-built and installed by the previous owners. Since the city acquired the park in early 2018, the top request from skate park users was to restore the, excuse me, restore the rotted half-pipe. In July of 2018, the city lost a beloved member of the Lynchburg skate community when Ryan Massey was tragically killed by a car crossing Rivermont Avenue. Ryan's mother, Selena Blankenship, approached the Department of Parks and Recreation desiring to do something for the skate park in Ryan's memory. After discussing the needs of the park, she felt a fitting memorial would be to replace the half-pipe skate park feature. Ms. Blankenship personally funded and operated numerous fundraising events. Half of the funds required to purchase and install the half-pipe have been raised, and with the city's 50/50 match from the Community Park Investment Fund, the half-pipe can now be ordered and installed. I'd like to recognize Ryan Massey's mother, Selena Blankenship, as well as Skate Park Advisory Group Chairperson, Tabitha Abbott. Please stand. Thank you for your contribution for improving the skate park and for making Lynchburg a great place to play. And the group plans to host ribbon-cutting and skate competition as soon as the half-pipe is installed, and I also want to mention and give a shout-out to Howard Covey, who's the facility supervisor and was a project manager in the city's liaison for this project.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones, for your presentation, and thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you very much. Is there a motion for discussion? Councilmember Perro?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to move the resolution, move the resolution, yes.
All right. Thank you. And the motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to add to this just a little bit. Oh gee, it's probably two decades ago that I was in the noon group of the Rotary Club, and, and the noon group and the breakfast group got together because there was a significant need for this, and it's the Rotary Centennial Park, because it's the 100, 100 years of Rotary, I believe. And one of the prime reasons of doing this was to impress upon the users of the skate park, the four-way test, the Rotary four-way test, which is simply, is it truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? And I think that's a great lesson for youth and adults, you know, across the world, and Rotary is across the world. I'm no longer a part of the Rotary Network, but I have great memories of being there. And I think it's important that the city continue to honor the fact that it is, and thank you for calling it the Rotary Centennial Skate Park. I would hope that there is still a plaque or something that outlines the four-way test that reminds people about service and Rotary and what Rotary means in a broader standpoint, and, and I just am so thankful that we, you, figured out a way to get the skate park in active circulation, I'll say. And it's been a tremendous success. I'd like, I'll be driving out across the, across the bridge, and I'll look down there and try to count how many people are in the, in the skate park, and it used to be zero for a long time, and now it's lots. So it's been a tremendous success. I'm happy to make this motion.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wright?
I think, I think, I think we're all looking forward to, I expect, to supporting this motion, and want to extend our, our condolences, and know that the community grieves with you. So thank you very much for being here and for approaching the city about, about making this possible. I think it's, it's a really exciting opportunity for us to be able to, to honor him in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you. Next is consideration of a closed meeting for, A, consideration of appointments to the Transit Company Board of Directors pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, and B, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice. One, legal matters relating to the Region 2000 Services Authority Member Use Agreement for the disposal of solid waste, and two, legal matters relating to the city's stormwater management ordinance pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 7 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting? Thank you. The motion has been made. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes, and we are closed meeting. Thank you.